Barry started his recording for backup for the town. So we'll. Then, of course, one second. My computer flipped off, so I was the technical problem. Okay, so I will call to order a regular meeting 1342 of the Waukesha Regional School District Committee on Monday, April 27th. We're operating remotely under the executive order of Governor Charlie Baker. It's revisions of the open meeting law. We are streaming live. We are on television and we are recording. So if you speak, be aware that you're going out to the world and it is also being recorded. So our agenda this evening, I just want to per what we've been doing and what I advertised, put off the public comments till after the superintendent's report so that members of the public who may be watching. Just so people can present the window for a second here. So what people can do is they can email in questions@wrsd.net. Again, it's questions@wrsd.net. And I will read those questions as part of a public hearing after the superintendent's report. And if not then, then also at the end of the meeting when we have our second public hearing, presuming that we get to that. Okay, so the first item on the agenda is the chair's opening remarks. Again, I'd like to thank all of you for participating. I'd like to thank Business and Finance for carrying on after a long, after a long meeting. We have a lot to do tonight. We need to hear about contingencies for this year. We need to hear about contingencies for next year. Want to hear from, summary from Budget and Finance about finances. We need to start thinking in the future about contingencies, be it the calendar, be it staffing, new needs, what next year looks like, MOAs with other unions, money. There's so many things that we need to address. I'll let us get to that. Unless anyone objects, I'd like to give our local representatives an opportunity, presuming that they've been on a bazillion calls today and have perhaps even more tonight to go under the chair's opening remarks, to give them a chance to address the committee if they wish. Mr. Guss?
Sure. Good evening, everyone. It's great to be back with my counterpart, Senator Goby. You know, certainly, we will be more than happy to try to answer questions that you may have. Things continue to plow forward, as we know, just such an unprecedented and challenging time. And certainly, many, many hours all of us are putting in, including all of you and our teachers and parents, just trying to get through this difficult time. We still, I think, have a lot more questions than answers to provide and to recap tonight. But, you know, things are still changing by the day, by the hour at some points. And I know the big question is going to be about budget and the budget debate. And I just want to put it right out there right now that as of this evening, I still don't have a date for the House budget debate yet. So I know that that's certainly something that we're all, you know, wanting to have happen and wanting to push for. But I think there's just so much uncertainty that we just don't know when we're going to be doing that yet. Hopefully, it will be very soon. But I just don't have a date for anyone tonight. And of course, we go before the Senate, so that obviously, you know, is the domino effect of the whole process. So I just wanted to get that out right away. And I know Senator Goby probably has a few things to add as well. So I'll turn it over to her.
Always takes me a while to unmute. I don't know why that happens, but thank you very much. And I think, Ken, had you received the email that I had sent out kind of about a week or so ago after the economic summit, just to give a little information about what's going on, on the state side of things?
I did, I did receive that. You might just want to give a quick summary if you want. It's not good news.
Okay. No, I can, I can do that. As you know, a couple of weeks ago, we had an economic summit that Kim and I were on the call for a few hours on. And it was quite depressing, actually. You know, there's really no way to sort of shake a coat things. And if you don't mind, I'm just going to look at my notes a bit. But basically, we know that revenues are projected to fall by about $4.4 billion or about 14%. And that's from the January numbers. The big thing is, of course, the unemployment rate. Right now, you know, we're looking at about 18% to 20% unemployment rate. And we know that we have an awful lot of work to do. I know there's a lot of uncertainty, as Kim had mentioned too, not knowing when the economy will kind of get up and running. Obviously, the first thing is that people have to be healthy and people have to feel secure about wanting to leave their house and to, and to go shopping and to go to events. And one of the things that the economists sort of talked about, they said, you know, that's probably not going to happen till they're really, that people know that there is a vaccine, that there is something available to really get people comfortable about wanting to sort of reinvest and to use some of the stimulus money that they have. So there is a, you know, the best case scenario and is that we get through what the worst of things within this next month and that hopefully by July, that people are much more comfortable about going out. Sure that there'll be a lot of pent up economic sort of energy, if you will. You know, that people will probably spend some money, especially to begin with. But the economists don't think that that may be sustained. You know, that people may do initially, that there may be kind of a big boom to the economy, but they may not feel very comfortable about continuing to do that. Obviously, the worst case scenario is that if we see a reemergence, if, you know, if the virus tends to spike again in another month or two, and obviously, that would be the worst case scenario and if we still don't have a vaccine for things. So in the meantime, the House and Senate continue to meet. We had session today. We do things remotely right now and we'll continue to do that. And I'm sure we're going to be looking at the same thing that everybody else is, you know, kind of looking at these 112 budgets. We are looking to do within the next couple of weeks, a supplemental as well as a municipal relief package. I know that Kim and I have been talking about that. And if there are, if there are some specific things, obviously, besides just the financial help that communities need. But if you can think of anything that may be more of a policy or something that would be helpful to you, that we can work on to change when we come out with this municipal relief bill in another couple of weeks, obviously, Kim and I are very happy to do that. We've already reached out to, you know, our regional schools know that if they need something that they can tell us as well. So, you know, that's, that's where we are. It's not, it's not a rosy picture. And I hope all of you, I hope your families are well.
If I could just jump in and add one more thing too, to what Ann was saying. The same with the Education Committee, you know, we've been meeting on Zoom meetings every week. And certainly, I talked to Chairwoman Peish on the House side almost daily about various issues. And, you know, anything that you are bringing to us during these meetings or in emails separately, we are compiling that and forwarding it right along to Chairwoman Peish and Senator Lewis, the chair in the Senate side, you know, for follow-up and discussion. Things like, you know, I know we are discussing still the vendor payment issue. I know that that continues to be an item that we need some more guidance on because there seem to be some conflicting opinions on the vendor situation, specifically also with our buses and payments that way. But also, looking at the excess and deficiency accounting and looking how regional school districts function with that versus the free cash that we know our municipalities are able to rely on and spend due to some legislative changes that were also made for them a few weeks ago regarding specifics and free cash. So E and D is something that, you know, I have been discussing with Senator Goby and with the chairwoman in terms of what other guidance or changes may be needed. So again, as Ann was saying, we certainly hear you loud and clear with the financial picture and we're monitoring, you know, what is coming in for revenue that way. But also, policy-wise, when you bring something to our attention that we may not have, you know, even thought of, we absolutely bring it forward and continue to work on it. So, you know, please continue to have those discussions with us because they're extremely important. So, thank you.
Yeah, and I was just going to mention, just, Kim, you triggered one thing as you were speaking as well. I know one of my other school districts had applied for a regionalization grant. And that is set to expire at the end of June. I don't know if Waukesha had applied for any grants that would expire at the end of this fiscal year. But obviously, we're looking to do an extension on all of those things because people just can't meet the requirements that they were supposed to do because of what has happened. So again, I don't even know if Waukesha's in that circumstance. But if you are, please let us know because we are working, trying to make some changes and to get some extensions on that as well.
All right, so again, under chair's opening remarks, I'm willing to, first of all, I want to thank the representative and Senator for their time and members of the committee are doing so as well in the chat. If there's any short targeted questions that, or things that members of the committee want to relate to our legislators, be willing to give you a moment for that? Can just raise your hand by the chat? Member Ember, do you want to? Give us a question? Bob?
Well, so, you know, I wrote in the chat, basically, that what, in terms of legislation, number one, it would be good to get 100% regional transportation. That was promised at the time when we signed up. So if they're looking for legislative things, you know, that's something I'd like to advocate for. And I'd also like to advocate for rural towns, that they waive that one and a half mile radius for not having transportation subsidized. Rural communities don't have that. It's not safe to have the children on the streets. So if the legislature's looking for areas to modify in terms of legislation, those would be certainly important goals for us.
So I can, certainly, we understand what the issue is with the one and a half miles. I think by now, or I hope, that the district certainly is well aware, as chairs of the Regional School Caucus, how hard Senator Goby and I have been working to get us to that 100%. And certainly, in the last couple of years, you know, we've been up in the 80s. But I just completely need to be honest, I don't know if that 100% is going to be a reasonable goal for this year. And I'm really sorry to say that. And we will absolutely do our best to keep working on that. But, you know, we're even struggling, looking at our Chapter 70 numbers right now and what those are also going to look at and looking at so many funding issues. And so I absolutely appreciate the comment and the suggestion and we absolutely will keep fighting for that. But I'm not going to say that 100 right now is going to be a reasonable ask for us during this budget cycle. But certainly, if, you know, Ann, if you have anything else to add, I'm speaking just as myself. But that, it is a concern, the 100. I absolutely understand that. But I'm not sure this year.
I agree with.
The only thing I would add is, first of all, I appreciate your support and your efforts. And I certainly understand the timing. But potentially, it might be a good time for legislation, even if it's not affected this, this particular year or even in, you know, two years.
Thank you. The other, the only other show I was going to bring up, Steve, I know you mentioned about rural schools and you're probably aware that we do have a rural schools caucus as well. You know, there's some 32,000 students that are part of rural school districts. And we have been able to put in, this last budget was about $3.5 million, to rural school districts. And that's based on a formula of how many students per square mile. So, and that is something, obviously, we're going to continue to try to work on again this year. But Kim's exactly right. There's so many unknowns going into, not just, you know, and I think people have to be pretty aware. I mean, this isn't something that's just going to affect this budget cycle. It's, I don't see how it's not going to affect going into 2022 as well.
Thank you. One thing while members are putting their list, I would just ask again, thank you so much to you both for your advocacy. As, one of the things I would ask is, as what I'll call unfunded mandates come down, which I'm sure they'll have to, so you could imagine reducing density in buses, reducing density in schools, having temperature checks, you know, as those things may come from DPH or wherever, if the legislature can be aware of the fact that we may not have the resources to facilitate those things and work hand in hand with us to, to figure it out as the time comes.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely, Ken. And, you know, the, the post-COVID world is going to look much different than that pre-COVID world. So I think we're going to see a lot of changes in many areas, obviously.
Do other members have any comments for our legislators before we, of course, they can stick around for the whole, the whole time, but. All right, so thank, thank you so much. And Member Longbowell also passes along her thanks. So the next item on our agenda is the student representative reports. Lea, Rihanna, do you have anything for us?
We did have a few questions.
Okay.
Leah, if you want to go first, you can go for it.
Okay.
Let you start.
My first question.
Leah, are you, are you there? Or?
Hold on one second. Okay. Um, so we had a few questions about how we're going to return the textbooks and all the school library books and the class sets. So like, I just wasn't sure how that was going to happen or how like, a lot of kids are going to return them, especially since like, the seniors are going away. And then all the money for school lunches, like, what's going to happen to the seniors who are also like going, like, are, like, are they going to get a refund or is the money just going to go away? I don't know. And then I know that like, with the 30-minute limit on the, on the time that we're supposed to be spending per class, I know that a lot of my teachers are like, assigning beyond that. And I know that like, we're like, required to go, like, to complete the assignments, but it's like, taking more than 30 minutes, like, for almost all my classes. So I just like, I don't know if Rihanna wants to talk more about that too, in her case, but that was just something.
Yeah, sure. So I'm in mostly AP classes where what's happening is that teachers are assigning more work beyond the 30-minute time limit and then, or that it will take longer than 30 minutes. And then on top of that, they're also assigning optional work that it almost feels as like, if you don't do it, you won't be prepared for the exam. And so while it's nice to have, a lot of students are feeling overwhelmed with the amount of schoolwork. I have a lot of people who've come to me who are saying they're spending four, five, six hours a day doing schoolwork, which is technically supposed to be capped, but it feels like it hasn't been. And also, I've heard from a few of our teachers have said that they didn't receive very specific guidelines as to remote learning and they were looking for more details as to if this 30 minutes of work should be an estimate for how long students should be taking or a cap. As this is what they're experiencing, so some of them are giving out work that they think should take 30 minutes, but then it ends up taking students an hour, hour and a half, two hours longer. And so they don't exactly know if they should be setting the time limit for the average student or for the student who would take the longest amount of time. And also, they're looking for more guidelines, students, at least at the high school level are, towards whether we can get a weekly schedule sent out for classes, as there's a lot of students that are still working or have other family commitments where they're taking care of family members. And so they have limited amounts of time that they can spend on all this work. And so it would really help if they could get a plan in the beginning of the week or maybe at the end of the previous week, just so that way they can plan ahead and try to get things done whenever they can, so they can keep up with the work. And what I've heard the most though is just that everything so far at the high school level has been going overboard, that students are really getting a lot more work than was expected. And also, Dr. McCall, I know, did send out a survey. I'm sure he might be able to talk more about it after. But he did send out a survey to families to assess how remote learning is going. So he might be able to offer more insight than we can right now. But so far, that's been a general consensus among the students. And then also, as I'm sure you've heard since school, has been called off for the rest of the year. A lot of the seniors are really disappointed, which of course comes with it, but I think we all kind of expected something like this could happen. And so there was a survey that was sent out to seniors and their parents to help come up with ideas for graduation and end of the year plans. But a lot of students are really upset that the only option that was mentioned so far is something virtual. And so while we clearly understand it isn't possible or safe to meet right now, a lot of the students do want a postponed graduation ceremony, whether that mean the end of summer, in the fall, or even next year, they're open to any options. And so I know students, they actually started a petition to try to get people, to see how many people were in support of postponing graduation until whenever it was safe. And I can send out the link to that in the chat after. But the last time I checked, which was right before the meeting started, there were 1,230 signatures on it in support of the students who want to just keep their graduation ceremony and have it whenever that be possible. And I know there was also a graduation committee that was established that is now exploring all these different options, but seniors are really feeling almost lost from what I've heard. They feel like their voice almost doesn't matter and that everything's already been decided for them. And so they have come up with so many different ideas, plethora of ideas about different ways that there can still be some sort of celebration ceremony, whether that be virtually or a few people were mentioning having like a drive-by ceremony or a parade of some sort, so that way, social distancing measures could still be kept. But that's one of the big, that's probably the biggest thing I've heard since our last meeting, is that seniors are really lost in looking for more than just a sort of virtual graduation ceremony, as everything that we have been looking forward to, we know it obviously can't happen in the same way now. But it, as of right now, it seems to students as that this virtual ceremony is all that's going to happen and they're looking for more.
All right, thank you to our student members. First off, Darrell, do you have anything in response?
So, you know, thank you both for those, those questions. A lot of questions. Rihanna, I'm going to go back to, you know, and Lea, you know, again, what I will do is respond to those questions, you know, if we get something in writing and then I'll put it out to both of you and to everyone. But, you know, again, the question around the amount of work, I think that's something that is so challenging and it's challenging everywhere right now because this is the first time that people are attempting to do this. So they're really taking a class, you know, so as a teacher, I'm taking a class that I was expecting to teach over the period of an entire school year and, you know, face to face and maybe see you every day for, you know, 47, 48 minutes, the block of time, you know, during that schedule. And then we're now compressing it. So they're really attempting to do their best at trying to figure out what the timeframe is, how long it needs to be. You know, one of the issues that we're going to find, no matter what, is that some kids are going to have, spend more time on certain subjects than on others in terms of studying, in terms of completing assignments and so forth. So that's going to happen, no matter what. We're just trying to give kind of a general timeframe and kind of also a ceiling, because I think I talked about that, that last time, you know, we want to have a ceiling. So it's good to know that there are, it's good to know, because now we can kind of respond to this, look at how we can help the students and teachers out in terms of managing that time better. In terms of the graduation, that is probably one of the more challenging items for me, personally, emotionally, for all the students, all the teachers, the administration at the high school central office. I mean, that, we understand just how important graduation is. My own son, who is a graduate student at UMass and doing his student teaching this year, he's, he's in the same situation where he's not going to be able to participate in his graduation ceremony because it's, it's, it's no longer viable. And when we've looked at this, I think, when we talked about virtual graduation, we're just basically saying, it can't, we're not going to be able to do the DCU center, have everyone there, do the walkthroughs and so forth. It just can't happen. But we are looking at several different options, you know, including things where there could be a drive-by, where there could be the opportunity to see the teachers and, you know, see one another in some form or fashion. So it's really something that is more than just what we're trying to do virtually. It's, it's a larger picture item. So Principal Bando and I have had several conversations about this in terms of, you know, where he's bringing the group. And I know Assistant Principal Pratt is in charge of the group that's, that's looking at this. And, you know, I've told him, you know, do, do whatever we need to do to kind of add some closure to the school year. Because again, I think, you know, for all students across, you know, the entire country, you know, we're all going through that.
Do any members have anything to say or questions for our student members? Again, thank you both for continuing to advocate for, for your students and do an awesome job with your, with your role and responsibility.
Ken, I would just like to add that, this is Linda Longbowell, I would just like to add that I do hope we can look at some creative options for graduation. I think if we can do something that's a bit more meaningful than a purely virtual, virtual online platform, I think that would be great. And I'm glad to hear that the students are thinking about a variety of different ideas and are, and are open to a variety of different ideas, even, even postponing an actual ceremony until, until it's safe. So, thank you.
Thanks. Member Gusselstein, I know you had a follow-up on the AP question. Do you want to throw that out to the superintendent since we're on the topic?
Sure, sure. My, my one clarification about that was listening to Rihanna's comment. My understanding from reading material from the College Board is that when they went ahead with the AP classes, that they were only going to be testing material that should have been covered through mid-March by their own guidelines when they decided to offer the test. And if that is still the case, which is my understanding, then I don't think teachers should be having an excessive amount of new material to cover under the guise of preparing for the test. So I, I don't have the answer to that. I'm not involved directly with the AP classes in our district. But in reading the national level documentation from the College Board, I wondered if that is still the case. Perhaps some clarification needs to happen with those particular teachers, because that was my understanding, that they were only offering them a material that should have been covered through mid-March, not through the end of the year. So just a clarification.
Yes, if I may say, what we've heard from the College Board was exactly that, that they're supposed to only be testing all material up through the start of March. However, the way that the AP exam units are structured, teachers are allowed to teach them in any order they want, as long as they cover the material. And so I am in four AP classes, taking five exams. And in all classes, they covered the majority of the material, but in each class, there's some part of it that they still haven't covered yet, whether that be because we just hadn't got into that in College Board structured order, or because the teacher decided it would be better to teach it in a different order. And so what that means is that if we don't learn that unit now, we won't know it in time for the exam. And so they do need to still cover it, but it's been hard. I know on students trying to learn all of this new material in only 30 minutes, and I'm sure it's been hard on teachers too, to only restrict it to 30 minutes. And so what they've been finding is that AP classes in particular are And so what they've been finding is that A P classes in particular are giving almost an hour each um at minimum, if not two or sometimes even three a day. And so when it's hard, when it builds up, when you have so many A P classes, and so that's what I've generally heard from students.
Thank you for clarifying.
Thanks. So we'll, we'll have some more chants under superintendent's report, but I know member Weeks, a member Smith had a, a brief comment with regards to the student comments, and then maybe we can move on to our.
Yeah, um, first of all, thank you um to Rihanna um and to everybody for their help in this. I just wanted to um get some clarification on two questions that the students asked. Um, because one is something that I've been asked and I don't have any answer for, um, money for school lunch accounts. Um, how is that being refunded to seniors or um is it just kind of lost in the, in the fold here? And the returning of books is something that people have been asking me about as well.
So the um, again, you know, we're working on refunding many different um groups of kids and so forth, where money has, has come into the district. So I, I know uh Dan's working with each individual school and uh business office um on doing that. Uh, the second part with the books, um, that's a little more challenging, uh, because again, we have to figure out uh drop-off pickup or drop-off times and so forth. So we've talked about lockers, we've talked about um, books coming back. We also have, um, you know, all of our seniors have um Chromebooks, uh, the newest Chromebooks, right, Rihanna? So um, yeah, again, what we, what we have to do is also get those back. So Rihanna has volunteered to um organize the pickup for all of those. Thank you, Rihanna, for doing that. Um, as your uh I'm joking. Um, we are going to set up a way in which we uh will be allowing all those to, to come back in, because again, we have to use those. We also have a lot of Chromebooks that we've lent out. Um, probably very close to three or four hundred um pretty easily right now. So um again, we, we need to pull all the Chromebacks, uh, Chromebooks back in uh this year as well.
Member Smith?
Um, I'd just like to, I'll just talk for a moment about um what Malia was asking about with A P, and it goes along right with what Rihanna had said. Um, I teach, I teach four A P sections at Algonquin. I teach A P psychology. And one of the challenges with the college board is exactly what Rihanna had pointed out, is that teachers can teach in any, any order. And that has always been okay. And of course, they had to find a way to might make a mark for the testing material. And in my own experience, I was fortunate enough to be at the point where um you know, there was one unit they're not testing that I had taught, and then there's another unit that I had to add to. So there was some new material I had to provide to my students. The other challenge for all of the kids that are in the A P classes right now is they were preparing for a different type of test formatting than what they're getting now. So now they're having all free response questions for the test when many of the tests, not all of them, but many of them had a combination of free response questions, open document questions, um your document-based questions, multiple choice, and now it's just one type. In my own experience, again, at Algonquin, um typically the month of March and April is when I focus on the the practice writing for F R Qs, because the beginning part of the year is content. So I was really at a disadvantage with my students and how am I gonna get them that, that kind of practice um that we would have been doing in school. So we, that's what I'm working on with my kids, and that's my challenge with my own students. And I, it's just really difficult, of course, for everyone and everything that we're dealing with, but then for the kids who wanna take the exam to have to do some of that prep that, you know, when you're in this kind of environment, it's challenging. It's not undoable. I mean, it's something you can do, and I'm doing it and my kids are doing it, but it's it's not the same as if we were in class. Um, so also the challenge, usually teachers look through different questions, F R Qs with their kids and practice tests, and that's that's hard to do in this type of environment. Um, so I can see why Rihanna is saying a lot of the kids are take, having a lot of time with the um, particularly with their A P classes, doing that prep work. Also, the college board has asked us to continue on with material if we can, which I'm sure most teachers are waiting until after the exam um to do that, but they have asked that you still continue because the A P tests are not just an exam, they're a whole course that you're offering kids. So it is a challenge. But thank you, Rihanna, for all your comments, um, and Leah as well.
All right, if we can have one more question of the students, the member Kirshenbaum, and then we'll uh, we'll move on.
Thank you, Ken. And um, thank you to our student representatives for bringing up this important uh question uh regarding uh workload and um, you know, and teacher guidelines. And I, you know, maybe I'm a bit premature in this, but I would just like to make sure that this is something that we move forward with on uh conversations, making sure that teachers and students are clear about the expectations moving forward. Uh, looking at that cap and just, I know that there is a survey that's gone out, um, so it's premature that we're gonna have any data tonight, but I'm just wondering what the timeline is to look at that data, get that data in the hands of the teachers so that they can be making the best decisions possible for all of our students, you know, K through twelve. Thank you.
Sure. Uh, thank you, Laura. So um, in terms of uh the survey, we had two went out, we had a general survey that went out um over the weekend and then a more specified survey that went out uh earlier this evening to each school. So uh what we will be doing with principals is reviewing those data with them on Thursday, I believe Rebecca. And then um, that information will be um just reviewed and assessed, and then we're gonna go back. That information is then uh shared with teachers through their own individual um building meetings. Uh, so again, it's the best way to kind of disseminate. We'd love to be able to do it holistically and really quickly. Um, but again, this is gonna take a little more time, and we wanna ensure that uh the information that we do um glean from this is something that uh will help us uh, you know, again, take care of some of the issues that we're, that we're seeing. And there are, there are good points, bad points, and to everything that um we're trying to do right now on the fly. So um, we really appreciate all the feedback we've had thus far.
All right, to our uh, our student representatives, and of course, any other questions members have, they can bring up under the superintendent's report as well. So I had to turn to that part of the agenda. So the first next on the agenda is the discussion of the report. So I asked the superintendent if there's parts of the report that he wants to highlight. Um, then I may actually ask just so we can start thinking about it. Member Dennis to give us a quick overview of business and finance. I know it's later on the agenda, but I suspect people will wanna talk about that part of the report. And then we can go around the table and see what uh, what questions folks have.
Sure. Um, thank you, Ken. You know, what I'll do is just talk briefly about uh some of the points that we uh I, I mentioned in the report and, you know, again, what we're, what we're looking at moving forward over the next several weeks. So um you know, the commissioner did come, come out with uh more guidance around remote learning uh Friday evening, and that is something that you know, we were able to review over the weekend. It looks as though we're, we were pretty much aligned with where they were going. So uh, the plan that we had put in place really allows us to uh hit up some power standards that are uh ones that we've been working on and ones that we're focusing on uh over the next several weeks to ensure that we're transitioning our students from one grade to another. So we're looking at what are the important items that we really need to ensure that um those students have prior to moving on to grade seven or to grade ten or, or whatever uh the different grade level might be. That, along with looking at how we can kind of best support students socially, emotionally. Um, and you know, in, in terms of technology and so forth. So all those items are kind of coming into play, and that's, that's basically the, the um, the way the plan was laid out from the beginning. And the recommendations associated with what Commissioner O'Reilly shared uh align with what we had done um already. So that was very good news, uh, as, you know, I read that Friday evening uh when it came out. Uh, in terms of uh some of the other items we've been working on, we did just have the opportunity to sit through business and finance. Um, I had uh the chance to also participate in a pretty lengthy uh Desi conversation today around um budgets, around one-twelfth, around finances, everything that kind of goes along with uh where we're, where we're at uh for F Y twenty, where we might be for F Y twenty-one. And you know, again, as Representative Ferguson and Senator Gobi stated so, so clearly, um, there's, there are more questions and there are actually answers right now. So um, again, what we're trying to do is assess where we're at, assess where we might have to be. And you know, really uh fill in as many gaps as possible in terms of, of what projections might be. So we're spending an awful lot of time uh doing that as we speak. Um, in reference to uh some of the great things kind of going on, you know, we continue to provide uh food for uh students. Um, you know, we had about, you know, we're averaging about a hundred um students who are utilizing our food service program uh weekly, which has been um, you know, fantastic in terms of the support that the cafeteria, cafeteria staff has, has put forward. So um we so appreciate that. Um, I know teachers and families are working diligently. I, I'm receiving a lot of emails every day from families uh around different types of items associated with work and with um different kind of concepts around um how people are, are dealing with their own issues associated with COVID nineteen and being um you know, basically quarantined in your own home. So uh, it's something that we're all kind of working through. And um, I, what's, what's, I think, nice is that we're, we're all experiencing something very similar. Uh, how we're dealing with it, I think, is something that we all have to be aware of. Um, and how we kind of move forward with this is also something we need to be aware of. Um, I did wanna thank um Rihanna for bringing up the point around graduation. Um, it, that was a, you know, it, it's a tough decision uh to, to say, okay, you know what, we're going to um basically not allow students to walk the stage at the D C U center. That, that's a, a, a challenge, but um, you know, I, I can tell you that right now, um, I think there were maybe two schools in the entire central Massachusetts area who are actually um in, in the process of trying to define a real graduation date uh somewhere during the summer. Um, I'm not sure if that could even happen in, in all honesty. I don't know where we're gonna be in terms of social distancing. I don't know what will happen um in terms of what the capacity will be for any um area or any um venue to hold um five hundred students plus all of their families. So we are thinking um out of the box as best we can around different ways in which we could make this beyond virtual. So yeah, there could be a virtual piece, but there also uh could be another piece. And that's what um, you know, we've, we've tasked uh the assistant principal, Mike Pratt, with, with the group of students up at the high school. So um, you know, Principal Bando is uh very flexible around uh some of his thoughts around what can happen with that. But you know, in reference to um everything else, we are, uh, you know, we continue to um move forward with the remote learning plan. Uh, the survey that went out uh yesterday, we've had about, I think, very twenty-seven hundred uh responses thus far. And you know, some of the feedback that I had just um was around not having enough information where parents could put down comments about some of the different items associated with some of their concerns. So what we did was we put together a survey that went out directly from each school that allowed there to be uh some information pertaining to grade level, pertaining to um students, whether or not they're on five oh fours, I E Ps, um, not, um, and just different comment boxes where uh families could respond to um how the remote learning plan is working for them. Is it working? Is it not working? What might work better? So those are the types of um data points that we're gonna be taking a look at, at the building level, and then more globally. Um, you know, once we're looking at this and we have our other survey data uh that we were able to get, um, you know, actually yesterday.
Thanks. So, so my plan for how to facilitate this is I wanted to give Mike just a chance for the forty thousand foot view. We can go into more detail under bu- business finance, but I figured that will be part of what people have questions for under the report. And then I'll go around the table and uh give people a chance to uh to, to have comments about whatever they want. So Mike, can you just give us a brief synopsis?
Um, sure. Uh, a brief synopsis. Well, let me do this. I, I can, I, I'd like to go, I think, one level of, of granularity um beyond what was already mentioned by the superintendent. Otherwise, I think I'd be repeating him.
Sure.
Um, and, and so if you think of the budget in two pieces, um, there is a state revenue piece, and then there is a town assessment piece. And the town assessment piece is made up of a minimum local contribution and the delta between what we would expect from the state, the minimum contribution, the rest of that is part of the assessment. So what does that mean? What that means is that when we build a budget, and we build it based on the governor's numbers, but governor's budget numbers, um, we do two things. One, the governor's budget numbers are pre-COVID numbers. Two, when we set that budget, which has those numbers as an assumption, um, we send assessment letters to the towns and the towns vote on the assessment. What that means is if the towns were to accept our budget and accept their assessments as we've outlined, outlined them, we would have some exposure and risk if the ultimate revenues that come back from the state are significantly lower than what was used as our assumptions based on the governor's pre-COVID budget numbers. By the way, we've already heard from the towns, and we can understand and appreciate that they, without having a town meeting, probably don't have a good handle on revenues and are not in a position to, to vote on that, on those numbers. So what does that mean? What that means is that uh we will likely um find ourselves, at least for some period of time, as will most school districts, entering into one-twelfth budget. The one-twelfth budget will be based on fiscal year twenty. We understand it will be based on fiscal year twenty numbers. The budget that we set forth for fiscal year twenty-one is about four point four million dollars higher than the budget that will be set in one-twelfth budget fiscal year twenty. That has two impacts. There is an impact on the size of the pie, the size of the pie, at least as we go into, if we go into one-twelfth budget, will be some number roughly four point four million dollars less than what we were budgeting. There's a timing impact or a cash flow impact such that we would be allocated one-twelfth budget to be able to spend one month at a time. Now, there are some things that we can do with pre-buying and carrying forth, carrying forward funds. But depending on the timing of when our key um payments or, or expenditures occur, for example, if we were to have three payrolls in a month in the fall, um, we would be restricted by the amount of money that we can pay. So I outlined this because I think it's uh, it's, it's an exercise that we've asked the administration to look at in terms of modeling how we close the gaps should we find ourselves in one-twelfth budget. What are the actions that can take place in this fiscal year that could yield savings that we can bring into next year to mitigate against that impact? And that was the focus of much of our discussion. I don't think that we're there yet. I think that they, the administration has identified some savings. I think it continues to be in the evolving process. But there is time sensitivity to this analysis. There are timelines in which, if, for example, we were to develop a new budget, when we would want to give review period for member towns to review that budget. There are timelines associated with when we take action and the number of dollars, the amount of money that can be recognized and brought forward. Um, so we've, are impressing that uh we, we need to, um, I think that the administration, I think, appreciates that there is time sensitivity to this discussion. Um, but this does mean that there are likely going to be cuts in some shape or form as we think about next year, and we need to understand and plan for the impact of that.
All right, Mike, I appreciate that. I thought that was good, a good recap of, of the meeting. Meeting was broadcast live. It was on streaming and I encourage if any members didn't get the chance to watch it live, if they go back and, and, and watch it on, on replay on HoldenTV.com uh to see the details of the discussion. Of course, people can ask more questions either now or under business and finance, but I thought that it was important enough to give that entryway into asking questions um now. So I'm going to go around the table to give people a chance. Again, feel free to pass if you don't have anything particularly to, to add at the, at this moment. Uh, please keep under two minutes so we can get through the rest of our agenda. Um, and uh, we can always return to more questions later. So I'm gonna, since I put Michael in this spot, I'll give him the chance to be last. I'll start with uh with member Godbout and then go alphabetically um through the list. And if some people early on in the list want to um, wanna pass and come back because they weren't pre-prepared, I, I'm, I'm willing to do that too. Uh, so we'll start with member Godbout. Uh, he says he has no questions. Uh, thank you. Well. Uh, member Gustafson, do you have questions for the report?
I, I have a couple comments, yes. I'll try to be, I will be brief. Um.
The first is I did want to thank the administration for doing a survey, the initial survey, and for taking our feedback. I know there was a lot of feedback sent, including some that I sent. And some of that is reflected in the building surveys. So I hope that that type of communication and feedback taking will continue throughout all of our process. So I appreciate that. One thing I did want to reiterate is I did look at the new DESI guidelines and my head was spinning because they're just, there's 26 pages of lots of information. One thing I did want to emphasize is again, and this was reflected in our survey also. You ask about access. There was a general question about can you access the curriculum? And then all of the options under that specifically had to do with equipment issues only. Do you have a Chromebook? Can you access the internet? Access is far more than that, and I want to make sure that we don't lose sight of that. I actually think the new DESI guidelines somewhat lose sight of that personally, having read them. They assume everyone has access to the technology and therefore can access all the curriculum. So I again want to reiterate that for a variety of reasons, some of which are student representatives mentioned in terms of other responsibilities, some of which have to do with special education needs, parents working. Access is more than equipment, and I don't want to lose sight of that as we plow forward in whatever reality we are facing. The other quick thing I did want to mention is in the report, you mentioned the SOA. Student, my brain is, the Student, you know what I mean. The SOA, Student Opportunities Act. And I don't know the status of that, but I do know that the CPAC is hosting a meeting tomorrow night to get special education, parent and family feedback on that. So I can talk about that more later, but I did want to mention that. So any more details that you might have from conversations around that process would certainly be welcome. So those are my two things. And on the graduation question, I encourage you to please let the students know how they can contribute because I think their big disconnect that I'm seeing is that they feel like they don't have a voice, even if they do. There's a committee working on planning, but the students and parents contacting me just feel like nothing, like there's no avenue. So they don't know what their avenue to have a voice is. So those are my three comments in a nutshell. Thank you.
Thanks, Malia. So I can, I can tell you, you know, one of the reasons why that group was pulled together so that there is an avenue for there to be conversation and to get feedback from, from students and families about graduation. In reference to the SOA, Commissioner Riley's been pretty clear that that's, it's almost on hold right now. So again, I think, you know, the conversation tomorrow night can be around what the, what the different ideas are in terms of where we are as a district in reference to our strategic plan, in reference to some of the different things that we've been working on as a district. You know, our issue, and this is going to be the issue in all schools, schools throughout the state, is that the SOA money is, it's not likely to be anywhere near what they had anticipated it to be. And I think they're going to have to go back through and look at the entire SOA in general because there is no way, and I think Senator Goby mentioned this. This is FY '21. This is FY '22. This is probably going to get into FY '23.
I appreciate that. I was, I was curious. So thank you for that.
Okay, Member Haber.
Hi. I have heard a lot about graduation. I'm happy to hear that that is taken care of and there's a committee. I don't think any of the students really realize that. As far as the surveys are concerned, I was glad to see the building survey go out with the comment areas. I was hoping, though, that that would have also included the social emotional side that was included in the first survey. I am concerned that people who are really having trouble aren't seeing an avenue where they can connect to the school counselors. And maybe, maybe we need to offer that rather than have them going searching for it. The only other thing I have to say is that I was really happy with how the middle schools are handling the subjects being separated out so that they're doing, you know, math, English and P E on one day and science, social studies and language the next day. In our house, that's working very well. Then I have a high schooler as well who is doing every subject every day. And in looking at the differences between them, you know, my, my seventh grader is spending an hour on one subject, is doing much better than my high schooler who's only getting 25 minutes. I think that it's important for the, it helps the teachers to be able to give them more, more to work on, to be able to actually teach them something and then have them respond to it rather than just the, the quick worksheets or the quick videos that my high schooler is getting. So I'd like to see if we could do something with, you know, periods 1, 2, 3 on Mondays and Wednesdays or something similar. I don't know how it would be arranged.
Thank you, Sherri. Yeah, there can definitely be something that we look at. You know, again, one of the things that we wanted to do with this survey was try to get, because I, I did receive quite a bit of information in reference to people writing, here's what's working for me, here's what's not working for me, here's what I like, thank you so much. I had probably 75, 80 emails between yesterday and this evening in reference to that. So having the survey specific information for each school might help. And, you know, in reference to, you know, things that we can do differently in reference to that third question, or I forget how it was framed. You know, those are things that, you know, those are areas where we had hoped or thought that maybe that's where we can also get some responses around the social emotional aspects of students, what, what might be necessary, what might be needed. But again, we're also looking to have, you know, Director Keenan work with our counselors around some type of outreach to families because, you know, again, this is, I think, probably one of the more challenging times in, you know, in reference to how kids, how families are dealing with this situation that's, you know, unprecedented. So.
All right, thank you. Member Haynes.
Thank you. I agree with, I agree with Sherri's comments a lot. I think the idea of having the subjects broken up over the days has been very successful. It's, it's allowed our daughter to kind of dive in a little deeper on a given topic. And I, I think that's a good format. And if it can be applied elsewhere, so much the better. And I also very much appreciate the effort that some teachers are doing more than others, but given the chance for the kids to connect virtually. I know that's, I know that's not always easy to coordinate, but when it happens, I think that that's an excellent, as good as it can get for now anyway, approximation of a classroom and that interaction. And I think that's exceptionally valuable and should be exercised as much as it can be. So one, one quick comment. I will delve more into the building specific survey later this evening or tomorrow. I appreciate that those have gone out. Glad for it. I, we had talked previously, and I actually had heard from our student reps on this topic of having a, a single source for where the information on the assignments is. And what's happening, at least at the middle school level, is there's a link that goes out. It's kind of like a remote weekly planner, so to speak. And I've seen that the majority of her teachers are able to get on board with that. Seems like all of them should be able to by this point. I, I, my, my daughter and I'm sure lots of other students are capable of looking in multiple places, whether it's Google Classroom or Gmail or this link that's gone out. And she can check all those places, but it just seems that by now we should be at a point where all the teachers can have a single place where they dump the assignments so that the students can go to one spot each week and find everything that they need to be looking at right there. And the last thing is just on, it's kind of building on the social emotional component we've talked about, incredibly valuable, although I have a slightly different take on it. Maybe I'd like to see a little bit more of, of the, of the principals. I don't know what all the principals are doing, so I can always speak from, you know, the Rutland side. But I feel like a couple of weeks ago, there was a video that went out from the middle school here in Rutland. And it had the principal, the assistant and the teachers. And, you know, that went over very well. And I think kids enjoyed being able to see people from the school again. But the, I think the important thing to remember is that no matter who your teacher is, no matter what your grade is, six, seven, eight, the principal is kind of the common denominator. You know, he's kind of the, he's the face of the school essentially. And I, I think that when there's a chance for kids to see him, it kind of helps remind them, hey, you know, we are part of a larger school system. We're all here at home, but we are part of something much bigger. And I think principals represent that literally face of the school. And if there was an opportunity, it means a way for them to do something, whether that would be like, you know, lunch with the principal on Fridays, where there was like kind of a virtual thing for our kids to see the, see them, interact with them. Or, you know, a few minutes on a Tuesday morning. I just, I, I, I think the principals need to be more than just an email address. That's, that's, I, I, I view that as kind of the social emotional component of this remote learning process. Thanks. That's, that's all I got.
Thank you. Member Imber. Bob, are you there? Okay, we can come back to Bob. Member Kirshenbaum.
Yeah, hi. Thank you. I want to speak to some of the thoughts that came out with the budget information that Member Dennis was speaking to. I believe that the, the potential for us to be looking at into next year as a mirror of what we're experiencing this year. In other words, ending the year remotely and beginning the year remotely next year. I'd like to make sure that if we're looking at cuts for the budget and so forth, that we are building in a plan for taking some of the lessons learned from this year in terms of technology support, P D and so forth, making sure that those are part of the priorities moving forward so that we can, you know, begin the year, you know, in the, with, with a built up capacity. Thank you.
Do you, Bob, are you back? Imber?
Sorry about that. So, so mostly I want to have thanks to, to everybody dealing with this situation. And, you know, I think basically folks have raised the issues that I think need to be raised. So I'm out. Thanks. That's it.
All right, great. Member LeBoy.
Thank you. I think there is one thing that I wanted to address, and I think Member Kirshenbaum hit on that. But I would also want to start to think ahead that what we're more than likely going to see is a phased approach to somehow getting back to some sense of normalcy at some point. When that is, I'm not sure. But what I would like administration to consider, as you think that, is thinking about those people today that may not be able to access the curriculum for one reason or another, those people that might rely on the physical element of being at school and those support services. And how a phased approach might be able to, to allow those, those individuals to get back and, and be able to pick up because I, I suspect the people who, for one reason or another, who are not accessing the curriculum will widen that gap. And it is something we have to, we have to think about. So just thoughts on that. I think the, the other components of the report that I wanted to hear from the superintendent on, I appreciate the, the information on, I think there was information on class size that I, I had looked at. And I know that school choice is something that's going to come up on the agenda, but I did not see an opinion from the superintendent on that. And I think Member Dennis had asked for that previously. And I specifically, I know that in, in years past, and specifically with full day kindergarten, we had talked about perhaps the district losing in the neighborhood of about $80,000 a year or so in school choice funds because people would send their kids out of district for a full day kindergarten, then they might bring them back in, in, in first grade. And I know this is our first year, but I don't know if you had any data points on that yet in terms of who would have potentially left, who would have not have left, who stayed here or how many people did school choice out. Those were really my only questions on the report and comments.
Thank you, Matt. Those were good questions in reference to the, the school choice information. And again, the, the class size information that I provided to you is based upon the school committee policy associated with class size. And, you know, basically we, we look at all class sizes associated, you know, especially at the elementary school, it's a little easier than it is at the middle school and the high school because you have to take averages. But again, that's a, that's a general estimate in terms of the number of teachers that would, you know, possibly be, be needed to take care of policy numbers. How that then kind of plays out with school choice, I think that's, that's a broader discussion. And, you know, when we're thinking about, we, we actually talked a little bit about school choice briefly in Business and Finance earlier tonight. But there, you know, one of the things we have to think about is the financial viability of the district over the next two to three years. This is something that is going to be with us for a little while. You know, 2008, we had the, the recession. We're in something that is, I think, even more immediate in terms of the, how quickly this occurred, you know, to have unemployment at the rate that it's at and to have revenues cut short by, you know, almost $5 billion in, just here in Massachusetts. Those are the types of things that are going to have to force us to rethink some of these different items. So again, what I wanted to do is share this information with you. I will make a recommendation after I look at the data a little bit more in reference to where we're at financially. The tough thing for us right now and for all of us, school committee in, in school districts throughout the Commonwealth is that we do not know what we are yet going to receive from the state in reference to federal government, how they are going to distribute the $250 million grant that we have, you know, available. And again, the way that money is going to get laid out, we're not, we're not even sure what the timeframe is going to be because the governor has to apply. There's a 30-day window for the application process, and then there's a 30-day window for the acceptance process. So not that, you know, a 60-day window is, is unheard of, but that could push off many different items. So, you know, as we kind of look at this, I'll be taking into account, you know, where we're at financially. We, we do have to think about where we are with class sizes. We do have to think about what might happen in terms of staffing. And if we can't add more staff, if we are in a situation where we have to not hire staff to replace people who retire through attrition, that will affect all of our numbers. And one thing to remember is, gosh, I think, 2007, you know, back in my report, you know, there's quite a bit of information around the history of school choice in our district. And you'll note that there was a pretty good spike one year. And that spike was because we had accepted all these kids who had put their names in. It gave us an immediate infusion of, of dollars, but it also affected class size for years, for, for absolute years. And many of you haven't been sitting around this table long enough to kind of remember that. But some of you, I think Bob, Bob Imber, you know, maybe Ken, a couple of other people sat around that table and we had many, many, many heated conversations around class size, around, you know, the, the concept of school choice. Why, why is it good? Why is it not good? What's happening to our own kids versus students from outside of the district? So those are all things that, you know, we're taking into consideration, which is why we moved in a different direction. I think Jeff Haynes mentioned this earlier that we are in a situation, or someone did, where we are, you know, we're, we're versed. We do, we have more kids going out for school choice than we have coming in. And we, you know, I've seen this happen and we've been purposeful. We're, we're doing that on purpose. We're not taking more kids in. And that, that has to be understood. But we have to think about what the, what, where we want to be and what might be the benefit and what are the options? And I, I think perhaps having an option of having school choice is something that we can think about. It doesn't have to mean that we are going to do it, but that is something that I had put out there in years past.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, so, uh, member Leo?
Yes, I have a question and then I have a comment. Um, so I'm hearing from parents who are really glad that we've moved to remote learning, and, and I'm one of, I'm one of those. Um, but I'm also hearing from parents who are trying to work from home, or who have kids who need a lot of support, either because they're in special ed or for whatever reason. And for some of those parents, the workload for them as parents trying to support their kids is just, is just really overwhelming. And so, so one question I have, and, uh, is, uh, what should a parent who feels that, um, the workload and their, the need for their support, uh, for their child and completing the workload is just too much? What, what should they do to, um, address the situation?
So it's a, that's a great question, and, um, you know, ultimately they need to reach, if it's a middle school, um, uh, student, then I would reach directly out to, uh, the building principal, uh, just to then have, uh, that direct conversation with him or her. Uh, if it's an elementary student, you could reach directly out to the teacher. Um, to find out, you, you know, if there's a way to, um, kind of deal with it. At the high school, again, I think, uh, go directly to, um, principal Bendo or one of the assistant principals in charge of, uh, that particular grade level.
Okay, all right, thank you. Thank you, that's helpful. And then, uh, I also, I just wanted to support member Haber's suggestion that the high school move to a system that alternates topics day by day, so the kids can maybe do a little bit more on a topic on a particular day. Um, um, and have it go into a bit more depth without being too much of a time commitment. Um, and then I also wanted to echo her, with her, what she had to say about the need for social emotional support. Um, that's gonna be something that students are gonna need, not only during the shutdown, but also when they return to school. We're going to need a plan, um, to address, uh, their social emotional needs. Um, so I just wanted to note that and kind of flag that issue, uh, for the future.
All right, thank you, member Mitchellowski.
Um, yeah, just really quickly, uh, feedback around, um, clarifying how kids get help from teachers. I've heard a lot of, um, concerns around, like, one of the barriers to efficient work is that they don't have access to the teacher that they need at the time. So the office hours are helpful for getting email, but the ability to connect, um, directly with a teacher in real time has been really limited. Um, so I'm not sure if the administration can think of ways, even, you know, creative ways to share responsibilities, maybe in a content area across multiple teachers. We have such big faculty, and there may be a way to connect the kids to a teacher that can help them solve an immediate problem, even if it's not their teacher. Because I think that that's one of the, I know I see it in my kids, is they just get stuck, and it's really hard to wait. And sometimes it's hard to separate from the task they're trying to get through to get to, to support. So, other than that, I, you know, I'm interested in the conversation about the budget, um, obviously and financial stuff, but I don't have anything else right now.
Uh, Amy, that's a really good point. Um, you, you know, I, I think when, you know, when we've been thinking about this entire process, having students sit down and, uh, you know, I, I've, I've heard this many times, um, if parents are working full time from home, and then they're also trying to assist their, their one, two, maybe three kids, however many, uh, children, um, and help the teacher out, help the school out, educate the kid, uh, we, we, we're trying to, we're trying to balance a lot. Let me look into, uh, you know, your question in reference to the live interactive kind of responses, because I, I think that has to be something that we, we try to address, because again, you, you could be working on something, and if you hit a, hit a wall, and there's not someone there to assist you, um, especially at the high school level with some of the more complicated, uh, course.
Yeah, I mean, in clarifying teacher expectations and what, you know, I mean, I can luckily help my kid with math or chemistry, but I'm certainly not a writing instructor. So I think just, it's really, uh, we have such a big faculty, and I'm sure they'd all be willing to pitch in and provide some of that support, just as a way to be able to engage, so.
Okay, thank you.
All right, I know we already had our, our student report, but I saw something in the chat where, when our student rep's asking a question. So, Rihanna or earlier, do you have anything to add?
Uh, yes, I had asked a question before, um, about, uh, the graduation committee. And, uh, member Mitchellowski, uh, actually responded, and so she said that there is, uh, uh, the class officers for the senior class, I guess, are serving on this committee. Um, and so students haven't been made aware that they are on this committee. And so I think that was a large part of the disconnect, is that they didn't know who they could go to, who to talk to, if they have concerns, ideas, anything like that. And so I think that, um, it might help if either one of the administrators could just reach out to students and say, hey, if you have a concern, these students are the ones representing you, so that way other students, um, other seniors can be aware. As right now, there's a lot of concerns over that. And also with, uh, getting live feedback. I have been talking to the National Honor Society teacher. I sent her an email earlier to see if it's possible to have, um, NHS tutoring at least at the high school level. I don't know if something like that would be possible for middle school students as well, where they could offer a couple hours a day and say, you know, we'll offer live help. Um, just because teachers, some of them are willing to offer live feedback, others aren't. Um, and they're more reluctant and, uh, would rather send feedback via, um, emails. And so I know myself, that can sometimes be really hard to understand, especially like if you're doing a math problem. Um, it can be really helpful to have the sort of either video chat or call. And so, um, we're trying to work on something. Uh, I don't know exactly where that's going, if it'll happen. But I'm hopeful that maybe something like that could happen to help with, uh, students who are struggling.
Okay, I'm having a little technical issues here. Um, member Mitchell, I don't think, is here. Um, or Otmar?
Yes, thank you. Um, just question I had was, uh, in regards to the information in your report on school choice, contentious topic, I know. Uh, so I appreciate the information about the seventy-one students that, from outside, that we are bringing into our district. More, my question is really more about, do we have any kind of data or any kind of information about the ninety-eight students from our member towns that school choice out of the district? Um, because when we're talking about school choice and kind of the rev, the finances of it, um, right now, school choice, it's a, about a quarter of a million dollars expense because students, tuition's out, more than tu- tuition's coming in. And another way to get that closer to eat, breaking even would be if we had more, if we had less students from our member towns, stu- school choicing out. And I, I just didn't know if there was a way that we could, um, get data, get information on why students choose to school choice out, um, or if, if that's even been tried, or if that's something we could even do. Um, but that's, that's kind of the only question I had for that, was in regards to the, kind of the other side of the school choice equation in terms of students leaving our district. Thanks.
So Carl, I can tell you that, um, I believe we looked at this, um, maybe last year, the year before last, uh, a little more, uh, in depth, uh, in terms of looking at where students are, are going. And, you know, I, I do know that we do have students who live on the outskirts of some of our communities, and they actually choose to go to schools, uh, that are closer to, um, where they actually live. So for example, Sterling, we have students who attend schools in Clinton. We still have students who attend schools out of, um, school districts where families might work. Or we have teachers who live in the district, and their kids go to, um, the schools in which the teachers teach. We also have, um, there's a program in Oxford, uh, a high school program, where we have quite a few students actually attend that program. Um, so, uh, again, we, we looked at it either last year or the year before last, uh, but we, we will, um, we'll have, uh, Director Keenan take a look at that information. It does come back to, um, you know, surveying, you know, families about that. So, uh, if we can get the information, great. Um, if not, we end up, um, you know, just, it's conjecture.
Right, and interestingly, the, the biggest chunk of it is, uh, that, I mean, it's not, it's not a straight, but it, it kind of, just this year's interest in the math works out that way, that the twenty-seven student delta between incoming and outgoing is, we happen to have twenty-seven students that go to the virtual academies, um, either Massachusetts or Tech Connections, and so. And those are the higher tuition rates as well, about ten thousand a pop. Um, so, uh, again, that's kind, that's, it's a different situation, because it's not kind of going with a parent who is working in a different district, so. Um, it certainly, if we could get that information, I, it would probably be at least kind of informative to us. I mean, certainly it's up to people's kind of, was willingness to respond to that type of thing. Uh, but would, certainly would appreciate if anything we could get, I think. Thanks.
Okay. Okay, member Silva? Awesome, are you, uh, are you there? We will, uh, come back to her. Member Smith?
I would, um, good evening, everyone. I would, I just have a comment about the remote learning section of the report, and just wanna, um, support what Sherry said, and I think what Linda was saying, and maybe, um, Laura, about, um, plan, I'm, I'm not sure, but about planning, having more of a plan for when the courses are meeting for the high school in particular. I'm, it hasn't happened yet in my house, but I'm imagining there may be a time when there's conflicting meeting times for students, uh, because the teachers have different office hours right now that are not by a period, or, and it might be helpful to have, I know at Algonquin, where I work, we're doing like periods one, two, three, four, on Monday and Wednesday. And Tuesday, Thursdays, we do our other periods. And it does help focus the work, I think, for kids, helps with management, rather than having the whole week in front of you. I think that might be something helpful for our kids as we continue into June with this model, and it's, um, just helping them with the management. I also think that's really important for some kids, and that teachers build in that, that component of helping kids manage assignments, especially middle school and high school, where some of the kids are still working on those management skills, and, um, there's a lot coming at them. I think that Leah mentioned that she's getting information from, Leah or Rihanna, I'm not sure, mentioned they're getting a lot of information coming at them, and it's not all coming from, you know, Google Classroom, it's coming Gmail, Google Classroom. Um, just that kind of thing can really put a lot of stress on children, and they're already under a lot of stress from not having their social um, interactions and from whatever else might be going on in their, um, in their lives. And that's it. Thank you.
All right, great. So, um, member Silva is having mic problems. Um, but she said that, uh, she doesn't have any questions right now that have been asked, but she does want to request what has been requested, extending time per class, so there's a consistent amount of time of instruction. Um, okay, so, member Weeks?
Hi, good evening. Um, first of all, thank you for the continued updates and keeping pace with this, this situation that continues to change on the daily. Um, I had one specific question, and then one kind of general question. Um, specifically, I wonder if there has been further consideration about what the seniors' last day will be? Um, if that's holding to be in May, or if that's gonna change? And then also if the commissioner on his call on Friday, um, gave any more guidelines to, um, relaxing the competencies that seniors need to graduate. Um, I'm assuming he meant in regards to MCAS. Um, I just know May first is coming on Friday, so those who might have not passed the MCAS yet may be stressed about that. Um, and I didn't know if any clarification came on those two matters at all.
So, um, you, I'm, I'm gonna have to pull up my notes about the competencies, because we, you know, I actually did get some information on that, so I'll have to put that, pull that up. Um, you know, your first question, Megan, was?
Last day for the seniors.
Okay, I believe it's May twenty-second.
Okay, you're holding. Thank you. And then, um, just a general comment, kind of, kind of piggybacking on what a lot of people said. Um, especially for the parents such as myself with younger children, um, the need for feedback. Um, I think that's a little slow to come forward on the work that, um, our students are producing, um, because it's not just a, uh, a show of what the kids are up to, but it's how well we are kind of directing them in that work. So just encouraging, um, as much feedback as possible to come forward. Um, especially with the credit, no credit situation. I did read in the report that the commissioner put forward that he's really stressing that we, you know, allow students to articulate to the next grid level, but I think there is some, some nervousness with parents, um, and students themselves of whether they'll be held back or not. Um, so having more and more specific feedback, and not just like, nice work, or you've done a lot of work this week, um, is helpful in that matter as well.
Okay. Thank you, member Woodland.
Um, hi. Um, so first, I wanted to thank you for all of the work that's going into this and this shift to, um, remote learning versus the first way that everything was rolled out. Um, I know it's a Herculean task to put all this in place. I'm sure it feels like you're Sisyphus instead of Hercules on some days, but, um, you know, I really appreciate it, and I hope that the continued questions, um, are beneficial. I, uh, that's my, my hope. Um, so I have a few, and I'll try to trim them as needed. Um, one thing that I've been hearing pretty consistently is, um, a desire for more consistency between schools in terms of grade levels, so from town to town for all of grade one, all of grade two, et cetera, and the middle schools. Um, and not necessarily in terms of what is being put out, but the, um, availability of differentiation. Because it seems like I'm hearing a lot of, well, this is all mandatory. I have to show the PE teacher a video of my kid doing the exercise. And then from other schools, that's, that's not required. Um, and so the shift into this is now mandatory work, and just, I think some clarification on that, uh, would be received very well from parents. Um, you know, for an example, uh, within one hour, I got two different messages. One from a parent saying, you know, these kids are, I'm having, I'm getting enough work, they're getting enough work, and communication's great. Another kid, though, not enough, it's too fast, um, what the work that they get through in a day. Uh, and then, within that same hour, I got a message from a parent at her wit's end for, it's all too much. And I think that, um, just clarifying where to differentiate for your own family, um, would be really well received. Um, and on that note, I have two other thoughts, um, with that, that I was hoping, um, to express. One is about, um, looking for more communication from the principals and, and from central office. I know you've been sending out emails to update, but I think that the encouragement of, we do want your family's health, um, to take precedence, and that kind of message, I think, i- it can't be said too much. So, uh, I would encourage you to continue those kinds of pep talks. Um, and then, on the other side too, I was curious if there's any possibility, any talk of parent training, uh, especially for the younger grades, where, um, you know, I know for my kindergartner, I am the one who's typing. I am the one who has to access the teacher's, uh, classroom, uh, Google Classroom and things like that, which, that's, that's fine. Um, but, um, there are the technology issues, of course, that the classroom teacher might not be able to handle. I didn't know if there's some kind of district-wide, general kind of training that might be possible, um, to do? Um, a quick half hour walkthrough, or maybe a, a direction on where to find one that exists on the web already. Something like that might be very helpful, especially parents who might not be able to, um, digest a long email explaining that. Um, but then also, uh, techniques from the teachers for teaching the material, parent training in that regard. I'm just thinking of the lower, uh, the younger grade levels, because, you know, looking at the early intervention model or in-home ABA, it's not just someone coming into your house for an hour, and that's it. One hour a week, you're gone. You're training the parents also. And so that's the, the position that parents, all the parents are in, instead of just the ones who have gone through early intervention. Now it's everybody who's, who's in this position of having to not just have their kid have their teacher for, uh, an hour, half hour, whatever it be, but have to synthesize that information and work with their child on it. And so some parent training on that regard. I know it's- I know it's, a lot is going on. So I, I do appreciate that aspect, but just an idea for that. And then the other two things that I want to ask, one is about if there are plans in place for how to handle remediation in the fall, especially if we're looking at like a mirror situation. So just have something of what you think that process will look like. I can only imagine that there would be, you know, only so much known at this point. So having a, a basic timeline of when you're hoping to answer certain questions so that when kids return, there's going to be summer slide on steroids. I mean, in my opinion, so that's going to have to be addressed when the kids return. And I'd, I'd hope that we are in a position where we can address that thoughtfully, plan for it instead of just, okay, so we have this decision to move to a model and now the next day we're putting it in place. I would hope that we have some amount of time. Maybe it's too much to hope for, but I wanted to put that out there. And, and then I think my other question can wait, but that, that, I don't know if you can answer at all about a timeline for remediation for when we come back.
Yeah, that's it. Those are, you asked great questions, Linda. You know, a timeline for remediations, I think, is a little more challenging right now to try to pinpoint because we're not sure what the process is going to be for bringing kids back into school yet. So one of the things that superintendents have pushed on DESI, you know, for is some guidance around what we need to do in order to kind of scaffold that model in terms of moving forward with, with kids. Because we are going to be in a situation, I agree, this is going to be summer slide times 10. And for many kids, especially kids who come from economically disadvantaged families, students who are really dependent upon in-class support because of IEPs and so forth, those students are going to be hit a little harder. So what we have to do is look at how we can best remediate the work for those kids. So we're looking at what that process might look like down the road, but we also have to figure out where it will happen. Are they going to say, okay, you know what, we're going to, we're going to infuse, you know, the districts with, with money so that they can pull kids back in during the summer? And they're going to help pay for transportation and, you know, all these other things that fall outside of our contractual obligations? You know, or are they just going to say, you know what, districts, figure it out yourself, bring them back in whenever you want to bring them back in? We just need to know that because again, we all are attempting to kind of do this on the fly, but we do have time to think about remediation. We do have time to think about what the fall's going to look like. We just, we need some more information in terms of where, where DESI is going. So having some guidance in that sense will be helpful for us. My guess is it's not going to be too defined because they, they, they have come back quite often and said, well, that's really a local decision. So we will definitely be thinking about how that plays out, you know, as, as we kind of get through the rest of, of this year because it's, it's, you know, I think someone said a little earlier, the end of the year is going to happen really fast.
Thank you. So we'll come back to follow-ups at the end. We have three more folks and then I guess the chair. Member Ayala, I think member Young is not here, right? So, member Ayala?
Sure, hi. So I just wanted to thank the superintendent and the administration for such a quick response to the, having the more detailed survey sent out. I thought that was great. It came so quick, right after the first survey. So that response to, I think, parents, is what parents were looking for. So I think that's great. The other thing, I think, member Dennis for breaking down the business and finance aspect. Sometimes it's a little over my head. I'm not the best finance person, so that was good of the breakdown. And this might be a premature question, but I'm just curious if, because he had mentioned that there is a possibility of cuts that we face in the future. I don't know if there is any detail as to where those cuts might be. That's my only question I have. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Melissa. So the, you know, the, the reference that member Dennis made was, was what we were talking about if we're in a situation where 1/12 continues for FY21. If that is the case, there will have to be some, some reductions because, you know, 1/12 puts us at the same exact budget that we're on this year. So we would have to kind of balance that off because we have other obligations, we have other costs, you know, such as our health insurance. It's gone up. They're not going to lower our health insurance because there's a COVID-19 crisis. So we, we're going to have to look at how that plays out and business and finance has directed us to really develop some type of plan of action where we go through and we look at FY20, FY21, break it down. Member Gustafson talked about, you know, looking at the light item budgets and having those laid out so that we can have more of a conversation around what it might look like moving forward because this is going to be a decision that we all have to make around, you know, if it's reductions, it's reductions to different parts of the budget. Because again, the, the largest part of our budget, 79%, over 79%, it's, it's people. So that's the part that's a little more challenging. I've lived through this many, many, many times. I've been here since 1999, so we have, we've gone through this over and over again. And, you know, there are times when we've reduced our technology budget. Barry will, you know, say that, he'll just nod his head and say, that's exactly what's happened. There are times and Bob will nod his head and say, yeah, we didn't even have a textbook budget at one time. So we've been fortunate in that we've been able to build it up. We have to, we're going to have to look at this very, very carefully because all the, all the progress that we've made over the past few years, I'm very scared, I'm very concerned that it's all going to be wiped out in one fell swoop and we can't let that happen.
All right, member Brown?
Hi, I'm glad that we have been proactive with the business finance and administration looking at cost savings that we can bring over to next year because I do believe there's going to be quite a bit of cuts coming up. And that brings me to the school choice. So there's all this unknown that is coming up. And so I think it'd be crazy for us to accept school choice at this time. We don't even know if we're going to have our students in the building come September. So, you know, again, with, with the, the budget being the big unknown and as Dr. McCall stated, 79% of our budget is people. Those people typically have contracts with us and even though we do go to a 1/12, they owed what we agreed to in their contract. So there is a lot of increases, 8% in healthcare and in the union contract. So that's all I wanted to say.
The, member Dennis?
Thank you. So, so two things, you know, one in response to member Ayala's question, and I'll just say it as plainly as I can. If I took out a hundred dollar bill and put it on the table and were forced to bet between whether or not there would be cuts of things and cuts of people or whether they would not, the hundred dollar bill would go on the former. And I just think that's the reality of our situation and, and we can, we need to go through some planning exercises to understand what that could look like. On the second topic of, of graduation, you know, it seems to me that, you know, our, it's been discussed quite a bit, but our seniors have had a number of things taken away, not anything that we've done, certainly not for anything that they have done. But what I think is important is that it's, it's something that's been done to them and to the extent that there is one, they have an opportunity for a voice. So, you know, it sounds like there's a committee that's in place and I think, you know, how students can communicate with, with those reps and with the administration, I think, is, is important to open up those lines of communication. So number one, our seniors know that they have a voice. And then number two, that there's an openness and a willingness to find ways to creatively celebrate their accomplishment. You know, I don't think that many people or I think most people understand that it's probably not very likely that we can have, you know, whether it's in two months, three months, in four months, 2,500 people in an enclosed building to do a traditional graduation. But certainly there are creative ways of recognizing our seniors and, and, you know, so if we, if we have an openness to be creative and they have a voice, I think we're going a long way to, to try and address their concerns. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So the listener will come around and see people have some follow-up, there were some follow-ups. Just to be like the Mr. Positive, I'll say, I think we're looking at an abyss, like a deep asm abyss coming up. And I think that I would urge the administration, urge the committee that we need to start addressing that virtually immediately. Financially, I know we don't have all the information, but there's dates and deadlines that are coming up that we're going to have to make really hard decisions about, decisions that aren't easy or, or, and go beyond some of the things we've talked about. I think need to be starting to plan for the worst-case scenarios for the fall procedurally, things about can kids be on buses if they're back in school? Can all those kids be on buses? Do we have to reduce density? Do we have to renegotiate contracts to figure out how it looks like having kids in the building off-on? I mean, all the worst-case scenarios, if we sit around and wait for DESI to give us guidance, we're going to sit around and wait without no disrespect meant to DESI. There's not, DESI isn't a group of a thousand people in Boston working, it's a skeletal crew of people doing the best they can. And I think we're going to have to take some local control because they're going to tell us, it's a local decision, as the superintendent said. And I think some of these really hard things we've got coming up, we need to really get guidance from the administration about how we're going to start peeling back the onion of, of, of where we're going. Because I think that, you know, as member Dennis said, if I had to put my hundred dollars on, on, on cuts, it's, it's coming, $4 billion, we talked about. And member Senator Gobi talked about. So we're not going to get answers from Boston, we're not going to get money from Boston, we're not going to get money from Washington. We're going to have to really start being ready for meetings to midnight where we start sharpening our pencils and figure out where this is going. Because I, I know some of you were there, many of you weren't, but when we were in 2011, I think it was, when we had our last financial real disaster, you know, these were not easy conversations and we need data from the administration ASAP to start making really hard conversations transparently. One thing I would argue against is we've been 1/12 through 1/12 before, kinda, not really, I would say. We've been through 1/12 with an I, that there was a light at the end of the tunnel where we are able to see, well, once the towns pass the budget, well, we'll be out of this 1/12, it'll be okay. Again, I'll leave this happy thought, it won't be okay. You know, there's, there's not a light at the end of that tunnel. So we need to plan for what 1/12 at the end, for the entire year looks like, best-case scenario. And we really just have to be prepared to make hard conversations soon. So anyhow, with that being said, did anybody have, I know the member Gustafson, the member Mitchellowski both had a follow-up on previous things. Malia, do you want to go first?
Sure, I had two. One is that I, I will not quote this, but I'd read that the competency question that someone asked about, I read something about that in materials related to the board event meeting tomorrow morning, so maybe we'll have some answers then. I don't want to quote what I've read because nothing is official until the commissioner talks to the board and they sort it out. So you just may want to watch that tomorrow. I think it's streaming at 9:00 AM, I think, or I forget exactly, but I think it's nine o'clock. Second question or thing I wanted to follow up about was member Woodland's comments about teacher training or parent training. I think, I know you were talking about the younger ages, but I think it's also important for some of the middle school ages even in terms of basic things. And I did actually, I've suggested this to some of our teachers, that my kid missed Zoom meetings last week because he doesn't have any organization to his email because these kids have never had to rely on that, basic things. They use Google Classroom for class, but it's always guided. And from the younger grades through middle school, they don't really, they've never had to learn that. We've taught them how to organize their papers in classrooms, but we've never taught them how you organize email, even do you, that you create separate folders for schools. And it seems very basic to us that you create a separate folder for certain subjects. But this generation and these kids have never had that and I think that's a piece of the remote learning that we haven't really taken time to do. We've just expected parents to be able to do that and I know I've struggled with it. We miss meetings and I do this often. And he's a very tech savvy kid, so that's just my own example. When I, I don't want to cite specific teachers, but I have relayed this in conversation to some people and got in feedback that they really don't have a lot of time to be doing things like that. And they did send me a very helpful video and I know other parents have gotten similar responses where they do have some resources to share. But I really think it's something we need to look at district-wide. Could we do a half hour Google presentation on this or add it to our resource page at the minimum so that people can, and we take it for granted that the kids can do this, but from certainly third grade, they're middle school-ish, the kids, they haven't had to do this in the past. They don't know how to organize even their information and keep track of it without someone walking them through in most cases because that's what happens in the classroom. The teachers walk them through, you go to this folder in Google Classroom and look for this. But on their own, I think there's a gap there. So I want to make sure that we, we can address that. It's, I think if it is executive functioning for their Google Classroom or whatever technologies we're using right now. And we haven't really addressed that in great detail. So I think it's something to consider district-wide in some way.
Member Mitchellowski, did you have something to add as well?
I added it to the chat. I was just curious about whether we were thinking about repurposing content in the PD days to take advantage of having staff kind of on the clock, so to speak, before summer to talk about reentry and curriculum things. You can email us an update if it's not something that you have an answer to, but I know those are coming up.
Yeah, I'll definitely email you an update. Typically, we have the opportunity for teachers to meet to even do class placements during some of these times. So, you know, we're looking at every, everything that we can in terms of, you know, what our typical model looked like in terms of planning out for the year versus what our new model will be moving forward.
All right, so do any other members have comments? If not, we'll move on to, on our agenda. All right, so next we have an agenda recommendations requiring actions by the school committee. So I would take a motion to amend the 2019-2020 WRSDC meeting schedule. Someone like to make that motion?
So moved.
Let's move, member Weeks. Do we have a second? Christian Baum, second. So just to throw that out there, it was in your, your packet, the dates that I was proposing, including one that's after the last stated election. We don't know when the elections actually will be for a couple of our towns, so we may have to move that again. I will point out that one of those days, May 11th, is one of those PD days that was just mentioned, you know, which in my understanding is still happening, you know, there's, we're going to need these PD days, but it is technically a day off. I don't know if days off mean things in the now times like it did in the before times. So is there any comments or questions about the revised meeting schedule for the school committee? Basically just every other week. Seeing none, I will do an alphabetical roll call vote, starting with member Ayala.
Ayala, yes.
Brown?
Brown, yes.
Dennis?
Dennis, yes.
Godbout? I don't. Godbout? I'll skip him. Gustafson?
Yes.
Haber?
Haber, yes.
Haynes?
Yes.
Ember? Bob? I see Bob's mic is on, but I'm not hearing a vote from Bob. We'll come back to him. Lavoy?
Lavoy, yes.
Longbalil?
Yes.
Mitchellowski?
Yes.
Mills, yes. Atmar?
Atmar, yes.
Silva? Silva, yes. Smith?
Smith, yes.
Weeks?
Yes.
Woodland?
Yes.
I remember Young's not here. I'll come back, member Godbout? Remember Young's not here. I'll come back. Member Godbout?
He put yes in the chat.
Yes, in the chat. Okay, yeah, Godbout, yes. Ember? Ember, yes, in the chat. Okay, so that passes. Next on the agenda is unfinished business. I would say that to take the motion off the table, we would have to have someone take a motion to take it off the table. That would be not debatable. And then, or as far as a simple majority, does anybody wish to take a motion to take that item off the table? I hear, I hear no members making a motion to take that off the table. If there's no motion to take it off the table, it'll stay as unfinished business. And we'll return to it, return to that at our next meeting. If anyone wishes to take it off the table somewhere else in the time of the meeting, that is also acceptable. Next on the agenda is the secretary's report. We'll pass over the approval of the executive session minutes.
What was the, what item was put on the table? Because I don't recall ever hearing a motion to lay on the table.
I'm just trying to find a way, Matt, to give the committee the opportunity to take up the motion under item five, unfinished business. I'm open to the committee suggesting the proper way, under Robert's rules, to, to, to do this. I was presenting as an option to the committee to, to, to take a motion to, to, to take it off of the, off of the unfinished business. If members of the committee feel that that's not necessary, then we can just return to the motion. That's also acceptable to me as, as chair.
I guess we're all aware of carrying a motion to lay on the table. And you would need a motion to lay on the table to be able to have a motion to take off the table. So that's where I'm asking for point of order.
Okay, my, my, the point of order is recognized. The, I'm, I'm looking for, for guidance if anyone wishes to make this motion. I would be willing to accept that also as chair if, if, if someone wishes to make the motion under unfinished business. I'm just looking for the way to do the committee's will here.
So, so Ken, I mean, I think maybe stating the purpose and then what the alternatives mean might be helpful. So in other words, you're asking for a motion, one way or another, in order to take up this discussion, a motion needs to be made, right? So what you're looking for is a motion to take up this, it's on the table because it's unfinished business, I think is where you're going. So if anybody makes a motion and the motion gets seconded to take this off the table and voted, voted to take it off the table, then what we're saying is we want to discuss this motion that's in the agenda tonight. If that motion doesn't carry, then what we're saying is we will keep it on the agenda, but it would, it can be picked up at a future meeting. Am I understanding that correctly?
That was my intention. And I'm willing, if, if members think that that's the incorrect approach to the Robert's rules for this, I'm willing to, to hear an alternative suggestion, yes.
I, I think that's fine from my, my perspective. I, I think it's, as long as we understand it and it's clear, I think that's fine.
Member Lavoy, since you're the point of order, do you have an opinion about how we should proceed here?
I have a big question on the last meeting that a motion was never, I wasn't there on what motion was made, when the motion was either to table it, to postpone definitely, or postpone indefinitely. So I think we have to go back to the last meeting and clarify what motion was actually made and voted on to be able to figure out how to then pick that up. I was the original maker of the motion of school choice. And I think that the last meeting was ended without really making a, a motion with clarity in terms of where that goes. So that's why I'm asking for clarification.
Okay, we, I think the, the proper way to address the, that question is under discussion, the approval of the minutes of the, of that meeting. Again, my intent is to, to find a way to take, have this motion made if, if it wishes to be made and not if it wishes to be stated as unfinished business. The, the draft minutes say that it was a motion, I believe a motion to postpone indefinitely, which then allows to be taken up at a, a future meeting. So I'm, I'm willing to take whatever action the committee feels is appropriate to either have this motion heard or, or not under this, at, at this time.
Yeah, I mean, I would, I would yield over to member Weeks because on her social media page, she posted an article saying that she made a motion to lay on the table. So I'm not sure. That's a much different motion than motion to postpone indefinitely.
All right, well, I think the, the place to address those questions is under the, is under the minutes. So unless anyone wishes to object, we could pass over unfinished business and take, I'm sorry, take out of order the, the minutes so that the discussion can be had under the minutes and then we can come back to this item.
Do you need a motion to do that?
I just need, unless anyone objects, I can take things out of order.
I would encourage you to go to the minutes.
Okay, so the secretary's report, item A is approval of executive session minutes. We're going to pass those over. They need to be distributed appropriately. We do need to get to that, but we'll pass it over for today. The next item is I'll take a motion to approve the 1341st regular meeting minutes of the Wachusia Regional School District Committee held on April 6th, 2020 and close with the call to meeting.
So moved.
So moved by member Longbalil. Is there a second?
Second.
Haber, second.
Okay, I heard Haber say Haber, so you get the credit for the second. So those have been made and seconded. So these are the April 6th minutes. So open it to discussion for the minutes that were distributed in your packet. So the motion in the minutes that was discussed, written down as the postpone action on the motion on the floor. I'm not sure. It's a technically a Robert's rules language. So what's, what's the discussion about this from the committee?
I think I made my point clear already, and I'll make it again. I don't believe there was ever a motion made and seconded if you follow Robert's rules of order.
Well, I could speak to my intent was just to postpone the discussion of that item for a later time. So however, it needs to be clarified that is fine by me. I, I respectfully ask for members not to discuss what they think my intention was without asking me directly. My intention was to postpone to a later meeting date.
That's my recollection also of what was the understanding I had of the motion that member Weeks made.
Does anyone wish to make a amendment to the motion, to the, to the minutes or correction?
Motion be necessary in order to proceed forward with this item on the agenda?
The member is asking for clarity on the motion under unfinished business about how we would take that off the table. My understanding, and I'm happy to be corrected if someone put a point of order because I don't claim to be an expert, is that if it was laid on the table, we have to vote to take it off the table. I believe if it was postponed to a future meeting, that I don't necessarily think a motion is required for it to be taken off the table. The motion I still, it would still have to be, I think would still have to be remade. But I'm willing for anyone to correct that with a point of order. So right now, the motion on the table is the, is if there are any corrections to the minutes. Member Weeks, it's your language. Do you have any corrections to the, to the minutes?
I would, I would, from my recollection, it was my intention to postpone to a later meeting date. And if we can make that clarification within those minutes, I think that may be helpful. My motion would be to rephrase the motion to, member Weeks made a motion to postpone school choice to a later meeting date.
So right now, the minutes say that they postpone action on the meeting on the floor, which I think is essentially what you're saying. Is there further discussion or does anyone want to make? So are you making a motion or are you, because what I'm reading is that that's what the minutes say. It says to postpone action on the motion on the floor.
If that's, I mean, that it was my intention. If that's not the correct language, I'm happy to correct it to the correct language.
So Ken?
Yes.
So just let me kind of understand what we're saying and play this through. If we read no changes to the minutes as they're written, we're understanding that the motion was to postpone. And by postponing, we're understanding that we can take up this motion at a future meeting, which we're intending to do tonight under unfinished business. And if we were to do that, we could in one of two ways take up that motion. We can either make the motion or vote to take the motion off the table. Or to me, the two pathways that we can do it. But either way, we have an opportunity to talk about it if the committee wants to talk about it tonight. If we don't want to talk about it tonight, we will have it appear on the next agenda where we can have the same conversation as to whether or not we want to take it up. Is that, if, if, if we leave the minutes as they are, is, is, would my understanding be correct? And is that a common understanding that we can share and move forward with?
I can't speak to whether your understanding is correct. I can just say I have the same understanding with my willingness to be wrong. I'll turn to my vice chair too for her, her take on that.
I'm sorry, Ken. I'm just, I feel like we're, I think Mike just explained it well enough to me, the two pathways. I don't have anything else to offer for clarity.
All right. So member Weeks, do you want to make a correction to your statement?
I believe based on the clarity statements, I'm sorry, it's getting late. The statements of clarity provided by yourself, member Dennis and member Smith, I am happy with the way the meeting, the meeting minutes are presented.
So if there's not further conversation, the, the motion on the floor is to accept the minutes as presented. Is there any further comments on the minutes? Seeing none, I will, we'll have to take a vote, starting with member Ayala. Brown?
Brown, yes.
Dennis?
Dennis, yes.
Godbout? Christine, if you can keep an eye on the chat to see if.
Okay, well.
Gustafson?
I'll keep an eye.
Gustafson, yes.
Haber?
Haber, yes.
Haynes?
Yes.
Ember?
Ember, yes.
Kirstenbaum?
Yes.
Lavoy?
Stain.
Longbalil?
Yes.
Mitchellowski?
Yes.
Chair abstains. Atmar?
Atmar, yes.
Silva? Silva says yes.
She said yes, yeah.
Sorry, Smith?
Smith, yes.
Weeks?
Yes.
Woodland?
Yes.
Young? Adam's not here. I'll go back to Godbout. I actually don't see Steve on the list, so he must be gone as well. Rebecca, we still do have Quorum, right?
Yes, Ken, you're all set.
Okay. All right, so that, that passes. Finish the secretary's report and I can return to the unfinished business. Take a motion to approve the 321st special meeting minutes of the Wachusia Regional School District Committee held on April 14th, 2020 and close with the call to the meeting.
So moved.
Moved by Longbalil. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Smith. Are there any discussion of the minutes from April 14th? Seeing none, we'll take a roll call vote. I remember Ayala?
Yes.
Brown?
Brown, yes.
Dennis?
Dennis, yes.
Gustafson?
Yes.
Haber?
Haber, yes.
Haynes?
Yes.
Ember?
Yes.
Kirstenbaum?
Yes.
Lavoy?
Lavoy, yes.
Longbalil?
Yes.
Mitchellowski?
Yes.
Mills, yes. Atmar?
Atmar, yes.
Silva? Silva, yes. Smith?
Smith, yes.
Weeks?
Yes.
Woodland?
Yes.
And so that's, those are approved. I will return to item five, which is unfinished business. Does any member wish to take any action on unfinished business? If we take no action on the unfinished business, it'll stay unfinished business. We do have a deadline of, Rebecca, is this June 15th?
No, it's June 1st.
June 1st. So we have a meeting, I'm, I'm having some technical troubles here again. We're having a meeting on May 11th.
I would like to make a motion to postpone definitely to May 11th.
Okay, there's a motion to postpone definitely until May 11th. Is there a second? Sort of irregular that the chair will second, but I can second. Is there?
Amy seconded it if you want.
I said, Amy, I'm sorry. So maybe Mitchellowski gave a second, okay. Member Lavoy, do you have anything to speak to your motion?
My hope is to just have it as a regular item on the agenda where the superintendent could provide more detail in regards to some specific things that were brought up tonight. I think that it was member Atmar who talked about those students going out versus those coming in. My latest recollection is that it, it costs basically, two students going out would cost the same as three students coming in. So there is a substantial benefit to be able to keep kids from leaving the district. And I, I know that in years past, I believe the number was 10 or so that would on average leave early in their, their education careers as kindergartners and then come back in first grade. And I would think that administration could see any of those kids within the district that are of that age that might have left for kindergarten to see if our full day kindergarten has had any impact. Just really get a full point of information for the May 11th school. So everybody here can come to the table with all of the information in terms of the impact of a decision on a vote. And that's my hope to put it to a definitive date and time.
Okay, member Dennis, you have your hand raised.
I do, thank you. So I think it's appropriate that we take up this conversation at the next meeting. And I do think that in addition to, I mean, I think it certainly thinks it's an interesting conversation in terms of understanding why students might be leaving and trying to get some information around that. The question of school choice really has, has to do with our participation in allowing students in. And, and to that end, you know, I'd like for there to be two things presented in advance of, of our meeting on the 11th. One is a breakdown by school and grade, what the projected class sizes would look like at this point. And then two, you know, my hope is that, you know, as, as the superintendent has had some time to reflect on our current budget situation, that he does form an opinion and a recommendation that, that we consider in our deliberations. Otherwise, I think we just have to do our best based on the information.
Are there other comments from the committee? Yeah, I, I would personally agree with, 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 with member Dennis there too. I would like to hear a recommendation from the superintendent when we come back. I know it'll be premature, but we'll just have no choice. And also, if he can give some, I'm sorry if it was in your report, Daryl, but again, with information about what the actual amount of money we see per student, just so people know, you know, obviously, there's, there's costs associated as well with that. But all the information we can have is, would, would be good.
Sure, I can do that.
So that's, so there's a motion on the floor. I'm sorry, member Atmar? Carl? Go ahead.
Sorry, I hit my Ctrl E, Ctrl D in the wrong order. So, one thing that Rebecca could probably at least share with the full committee, I had sent to the Business and Finance Committee a spreadsheet that lists, you know, I just, it was just one I pulled from the DESI site that lists number of students going out, number of students coming in, which was how I was able to get to my numbers, and how we can see that for this year, school choice cost us about a quarter of a million. But again, the, it's, it's interesting in that, for the most part, with the exception of the virtual, the two virtual schools, 27 students, about $200, $250,000. There's basically 71 students going out, 71 students coming in, about $5,000, because $5,000 is the state-approved tuition rate for school choice. There's a little bit of an adjustment for additional services that may be associated with a certain student. But certainly Rebecca could, it's, it's a spreadsheet that I pulled off the state's site, so, as well as a link to the site, so certainly could share that, this additional information. But it's just, it's, it's just the raw numbers for students going out, students going in. Again, it doesn't capture what Dr. McCall had as far as where all the students that are coming in, the 71 where they fall, it doesn't capture that, it doesn't give us all that detail. For the 98 students that are out of the district, we don't have any information on them as well. And so, it's an incomplete picture, but it, it's kind of a top-line view of it. So, it, it could be a starting point if folks at least wanted to look at that.
All right, so the motion on the table is, is to postpone definitely. Christina, again, I'm sorry, I'm having an issue in case you, in case I go away. The motion on the table is to postpone definitely to May 11th. Chris, my screen has gone blank on me, Christina, can you?
We can still hear you.
Okay, you, you can hear me, I just can't, I just can't see anything, so.
Okay.
So, is there anybody else who is wishing to speak to the motion on the floor, which isn't the, is, is the motion to postpone definitely until May 11th? Okay, I'm, I'm seeing none. Christina, can you run the vote while I?
Yes, I'm just getting the list of people.
If you can hear me, I can, I can say the names, that's fine. But I can't see things in the, in the chat. Member Ayala?
Sorry, yes.
Member Brown?
Brown, yes.
Uh, Member Godbout?
I don't think he's there.
Yes.
Oh, I think we lost Ken. So, let me pull up the listing, hold on just one second. Just give me one second.
We might, we might know our order. Haber, yes.
H, okay.
Jeff, yes.
So, that was H I J.
I remember, Imber, yes.
L, okay.
Kirstenbaum, yeah.
All right.
Lavoy, yes.
Longbalil, yes.
Mitchellowski, yes.
Mills, yes, can you hear me now?
Oh, we can, yes.
Okay. Go ahead.
Atmar, yes.
Is Silva next?
Yes.
And she said yes.
Yes.
And Smith, yes.
Weeks, yes.
Woodland, yes.
And we don't have Member Young here, so that takes us to the end?
I can say yes.
Okay.
Okay.
So, you're back, Ken, go ahead.
My, my computer fell asleep, not me.
Not yet.
Yeah, all right, so that will reappear on our May 11th meeting. So, the next item on the agenda is the Treasuries Reports and Financial Statements. If you have questions about those, please direct them to Subcommittee Chair Dennis or to Mr. Dede. Next on the agenda is the Committee Reports. Management Subcommittee hasn't met. I'm actually, to be honest, waiting for a direction from the superintendent if he wishes to have this committee meet. And I would think downstream, this committee could facilitate how the committee goes about the important discussions that I discussed about, you know, what I'll call the abyss, and how the committee needs to cycle through thinking through these questions. We can't do them all in one meeting, but there's a lot of important things that have to come up, and we need to probably focus on some of them, a meeting at a time. So, you know, I, I would hope the superintendent, and perhaps with Member Smith, can discuss when the right time is to have a management meeting to facilitate your work there with the committee. Uh, next item is Education, Bob?
I have nothing to add because we haven't met.
Business and Finance, Mike, I know I put you on this, on this, on the, without warning earlier, but do you have more things to add?
No.
I think we covered it at the top.
Okay, do people have questions for Business and Finance, though? Okay, I'm, I'm hearing no further questions from Business and Finance. Legal, Scott?
I have one question.
I'm sorry.
Don't mind.
Sure, Rihanna?
Um, one thing that students and also a few teachers had mentioned wondering was if there's a timeline at all for when any of those refunds being issued are going to take place. I know it's not the biggest concern. That's one thing that was mentioned, is that there hasn't seemed to be a timeline as to when any of this would happen.
So, there's not a timeline yet, Rihanna. It's something that we're working on with Building Principals and the Business Office and Director Dede. So, some are coming in, some are going out. But it's happening, and it's kind of rolling out by building, so it'll happen.
Okay, thank you.
We see in the chat, I don't know if you can see, Ken, that Member Haber mentioned she got her sports refund today, or something to that effect.
Which is good, but kind of sad, because it means the supports aren't happening. It's just kind of the world we're living in. I saw another comment in the chat, was that Member, Member Gustafson, do you want to, you have a comment?
Sorry, I just wanted to reiterate that we did not set a next meeting date at the end of Business and Finance in our rush to get to this meeting. But I wanted to reiterate that based on our discussion and discussion during this meeting, that I hope it is sooner rather than later, and that will depend on administration and data that comes to us likely. So, I hope it's not, you know, the two hours before our next school committee meeting, because I think we have discussions that require more time than that. So, I just wanted to reiterate that.
And I would like to second that point, thank you.
I don't know if thirds are allowed, but I went to that one, too. And so, we're getting on four hours now, and it's been a long afternoon. All right, so, Legal, Scott?
Yeah, we have three unions that contracts expire in June. We kind of started negotiating with the paraprofessionals, and then COVID-19 happened. And so, we are going to reach out to the three, which is the ABA PAs, the paraprofessionals, and the Wachusia Administrators Association. And we're going to see if they want to bargain remotely. And it's interesting, starting bargaining at this time because of the budget uncertainty going forward. So, I really don't know where we're going to head with the bargaining on that. But I'll keep the committee up to date.
Does anybody have a question for Legal? Because I do. We, you know, approved an MOA for the WREA at our last meeting. I just want Legal to be in contact with the superintendent and have discussions if there's other MOAs that need to be discussed with other unions, if there's follow-up MOAs with, with the teachers, that we just have a process where the Subcommittee works with the superintendent and brings it to the school committee in an appropriate way, so that we're doing our, our due diligence.
Yes, we had a meeting last week with Naomi Stromberg, with the administration. We won over these three. We did ask in the guiding the other units, just to make sure that, because there's, with the MOAs and the contracts, there's dates associated in the contracts. And if they, if, you know, because of the budget crisis, we don't want to miss any dates. And so, we're reviewing all that.
There any other questions for Legal? All right, Goals and Evaluation Subcommittee, Matt?
Yeah, we, thanks, Ken. We met as a Subcommittee and took some of the direction from the Full School Committee that we talked about in the, the last Full School Committee. And we're, we're aiming to have the composite evaluation done towards the end of June. So, I think for the Full School Committee, some key, key dates to keep in mind. Dr. McCall is planning on submitting his, his evaluation to the school committee for the beginning, for the beginning of June. At that point, the Subcommittee will, will present to the Full School Committee the electronic template on completing the evaluation. We'll then leave, leave that. The school committee will complete the evaluation. Ken will, will, will put together the composite evaluation, which will be voted on as a Full School Committee. So, the next month or so, we're going to meet as a, as a Subcommittee to make sure that the evaluation template is ready. Barry is, is working on that now. Dr. McCall will be working, putting together his documentation, his evidence. That's, that's really what's going to happen over the next month. I don't know if I missed anything.
There any questions from members of the committee, or comments? Seeing none, Audit Advisory, Member Mitchell is not here. Daryl is, or Dan's, or anything about Audit Advisory we need to know? Daryl's shaking his head. I assume audits are still proceeding the way they should be, because it's important.
So, I, I can just quickly interject. We're still working with the auditors around a couple of minor questions. So, I think once those are complete, we'll be able to come back to Audit Advisory and have it approved.
Okay, so the next item, I'm sorry, there are questions for Audit? Seeing none, next is Ad-Hoc Subcommittees. Ad-Hoc committees, so, in order to negotiate the superintendent's contract, we met last week, we're meeting tomorrow in executive session to continue that process. We'll call for an executive session at the Full School Committee once we have something to, to share. Building Committees, there are none. School Council Reports? Is there anything, including CPAC? I'm sorry, I forgot, before we go to them, I forgot Facilities and Security. How could I do that? Adam's not here, but Linda is. So, Linda, do you have anything from Facilities and Security?
No, we haven't met.
Okay. But I'm sorry to skip you anyway. So, is there anybody questions for Facilities and Security?
No.
Okay.
Something.
Alaya, yes.
I just had a CPAC reminder. That CPAC is having a virtual meeting tomorrow at 6:30. I, it's going to be online. All the details are in the posting, although I need to find the link to how to actually access it. But I do know it will be online, and Randy will be checking emails during the meeting to allow for public comment as well. I believe it's a Zoom meeting. So, I just wanted to let people know about that. The topic is the Student Opportunities Act, and I'm not really sure how that discussion will go, but I encourage people to attend, and especially if they have comments about the needs of special education students going forward, because I, I don't know what the initial thoughts of the district were or are around this, but it's intended to be a discussion to invite public comment around that, and whatever direction it takes, that public comment will still be valuable, perhaps more so than a few weeks ago, because I think that population has some, some needs that are emerging and will become more notable in the future. So, if you have thoughts on that, please join the meeting virtually and share them. There was an email that went out last week from Christine Smith that had all of the details about the meeting as well, so.
I have just a global question to the superintendent under this topic, Daryl. There are, like, legal requirements for the school councils to do certain things, and I know they, I, I don't know if they've been meeting, but people haven't been reporting on them. I know there's so many things on the, on people's plates right now, but I assume the school councils do still need to find some way to meet, or has that been relaxed?
So, I'm not sure whether or not it has been relaxed. I think the timeframe, I believe I talked about this last time, was, I, I think we're looking at six meetings during the school year. So, again, we're, we're meeting with our principals on Thursday. You know, we'll talk to them again about that, just to ensure that there, if it does have to happen, it has to happen. We've not had any guidance from DESI in reference to SNCOS.
And, you know, kind of, I, I don't want to put words in Alaya's mouth, but I think she was thinking about, like, how is this meeting run? How is it public? What are my responsibilities? They're not her responsibilities, because you're not the chair of that, that meeting, but, but we'd also have to help our principals think about if they're going to run school council report meetings. They are actually public meetings, so we have to find some way, if it's a posting or recording, something to, to make sure that we're following the open meeting law, because, you know, they are technically open meetings. They need to be posted on the school's website. So, if you can help, you know, your principals figure out the way to do that, I think it's still important, right, that school councils find a way to meet, because I think the principals would really want that, right? They, feedback from the community, from the school committee, from, from their members. So, again, I know there's a million things going on, but we want to make sure that we're doing what we're supposed to legally be doing for, for these, these councils.
Yeah. Point, point taken.
Okay. Public hearing, I apologize, I didn't interrupt earlier in the meeting to say that nobody had emailed me, but nobody had emailed me, or the questions, that, that email just bounces to me. So, there still are no questions. If there's any member of the public who's actually logged in to the meeting, I don't know if anyone's still here. So, does anybody have any new business?
I, I do, is that okay?
Uh, yeah.
So, oh, I don't, I put my camera on. So, it's actually, I think it would be sent through to EdSub. I was looking at the class size policy and realized that the last time that we edited that policy was in 2004. And I just feel like it might be something great to have the EdSub Committee do a little research on, in line with other policies that are higher priority, I'm sure. But just because, or I don't know if Christina has feedback on whether, or Bob has feedback on whether they have, but I feel like we shoot ourselves in the foot a little bit. And I'm not sure, having done a little bit of looking around at other model policies, I'm not sure we're really in line with what most districts are actually putting forth as class size recommendations anymore. I feel like we're slightly under. And I know that it won't change a lot, except kind of optics. So, it was just a suggestion.
So, so, can you hear me?
Yep.
Can you guys hear?
Yes, we can hear you, Bob.
We can hear you. And, and for now, I think it's just if you've been talking about it or not, and then we can talk about it when it's on the agenda later.
So, it is on the agenda, and, and we, we are looking to look at it. And in fact, even tweaking of a little bit of numbers might make a, a major difference. So, so, it, it is on the agenda.
Thank you.
All right, thank you both. Is there other items of new business that the committee wants to put on the table for the future? I think we've given a lot of them throughout the course of this meeting. Okay, I'm not hearing any others. So, that said, I will take a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
So, Member Longbalil moved, Member Haber seconded. So, I'll go through the roll. Member Ayala?
Ayala, yes.
Brown?
Brown, yes.
Dennis?
Dennis, yes.
I think Godbout is gone, is that?
Yes, he's not here.
Okay, Gustafson?
Yes.
Haber?
Haber, yes.
Haynes?
Yes.
Imber?
Yes.
Kirstenbaum?
Yes.
Lavoy?
Lavoy, yes.
Longbalil?
Yes.
Mitchellowski?
Yes.
Mills, yes. Mitchell is not here. Atmar?
Atmar, yes.
Silva? Silva says yes. Uh, I'm sorry, Smith?
Smith, yes.
Weeks?
Yes.
And Woodland?
Yes.
That said, we are adjourned. Thank you all for, for coming, and. Thank you all for coming, and we will see you at our next meeting. Everyone, be safe.
Thank you.
Thank you, you too.